Turn their cell phones off for the duration of the meeting. I'll ask the acting clerk to provide a report concerning matters discussed during the earlier closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was one item on the closed agenda this evening, and on that item, the CIO provided committee with a legal update on the wastewater treatment plant. And for anyone watching at home, all members are in attendance. Counselor McKay is the deputy mayor in the chair, and all other members are attending electronically.
We have no allegations this evening. We have no presentations this evening. We have two public notices, which I'll ask the acting clerk to review.
Can I hear you, Dave?
Sorry?
Turn the mic on.
So I have to check it over?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
That's better.
We have two public notices, which I'll ask the acting clerk to review.
Okay, the first public notice this evening is to remind the public to spring clean the city. It's time to clean up and discard unsightly items around your property and to clean up or clear out overgrown grass, trees, and shrubs. Ensure items, including derelict vehicles, appliances, mattresses, and house waste, are taken to landfill, picked up, or taken to an appropriate scrapyard, ensuring hauled loads are secure during transportation. Voluntary compliance with property standards and maintenance bylaws ensures a cleaner and healthier community. Identification of any property in noncompliance will initiate a response from the city indicating the necessary correction or course of action and timeframe for completion. Our second notice pertains to the upcoming traffic and parking changes around St. Joseph's School. Effective September 1st, a maximum speed school zone will be in effect from Colonization Avenue to 97.5 meters west of the west leg of Park Crescent with a reduced speed limit of 40 kilometers an hour. Restrictions will be in place from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday to Friday, from September 1st to June 30th of each year when signals are flashing. Also effective September 1st and during school times, the current no parking area on the east side of Evergreen Place from Parkdale Road to 95 meters north of Parkdale Road will become a no-stopping area, and the current school bus loading zone on the west side of Evergreen Place will become a no-parking area. Additionally, a no-stopping area will be created on the north side of Parkdale Road from the intersection of Evergreen Place to 35 meters east of Evergreen Place, and vehicles traveling southbound on Evergreen Place will be prohibited from turning left onto Parkdale Road.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Lansdale-Roll to present his staff report. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. Is everyone can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. The recommendation coming out of the staff report is that council receives this information a year-end 2019, basically financial report. I just wanted to highlight that the information is based on unaudited preliminary financial data. So our financial statements as we speak are being put together. I'm not aware of any major material adjustments that have taken place throughout our audit. So the year-end financial results that are presented this evening will give you a fair representation of where the results for 2019 came in at. In summary, overall, the city had a net operating surplus of just over 500,000. Our revenues came slightly under approximately 300,000 or right around 1% lower than anticipated. Our operating expenditures were approximately 800,000 positive or just under 3% from budgeted levels. So in the report, it highlights some of the key variances that caused or key issues or items that caused those revenue and expenditure variances. Maybe I'll, like, rather than waiting questions at the end of the report, are there any questions related to the year-end operating results? And then I'll get into the capital and reserve after the fact.
Counselor McKinnon, Shane McKinnon?
Thank you. I just, I think this falls under what you're asking, Mr. Treasurer, and that's the revenue being up on page four. Am I getting it too far ahead here?
Yeah, that's page four. It's actually, that's a negative variance of 300,000 or $313,000.
Yeah, I'm looking specifically at the user fee revenue. And just a question about the increases in fees, like landfill fees and things. Is that an increase in the fee or the usage?
That would be, so childcare makes up quite a large portion of that, and our budget is based on historical average between fee subsidy revenue that we receive from KDSB and actual parent fees. And in 2019, that mix was shifted a little bit, and the parents were paying more. And so we have different line items. The KDSB fee subsidy is in that external receipt where the childcare fees are in our user fees and charges. So that, a large portion of that positive variance is just, it's not a net impact to the city, it's just who was paying for those childcare fees. Now, for the landfill, landfill, it wasn't, it wasn't an increase. We had an increase going into 2020, but not, not an increase in 2019. So it wasn't an increase in fee, but it would be an increase in basically garbage tags and actual people, like the weight of people bringing items to the landfill.
To the usage?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So moving on to our 2019 capital plan, the 2019 capital plan called for just over 313,000 of city funds from operations being utilized for, to go towards our capital plan. Those dollars were fully expended in 2019. That's not to say that every item that was part of our capital plan took place or was right on budget. There was a lot of ebbs and flows to the plan. A lot of items were funded by external sources. But at the end of the day, through our capital planning management, we fully utilized the city's money. I don't know, and again, I don't, like, you know, you have the report. Let's maybe wait, rather than waiting to the end, if you have any questions about the capital plan, then I can answer those right now.
Counselor Bush?
I don't really have, I don't really have any questions, Stephen, on the capital plan. I think you've done a, just an excellent job of explaining the expenditures and where the monies went and the adjustments that were made throughout the year. But I would say that it's very good to see that the city actually spent its capital budget. As we've talked before, it was only a few short years ago that capital budgets were routinely underspent in the cities by somewhere between 600 and 900,000 dollars a year. And that really, what we're doing now, and spending to our budget, really is something that the public needs to be aware of because what it's done is, it's done two things. Before, we were building up a backlog of maintenance and critical projects every time we underspent our budget. And so now that we're spending our budget, we're keeping up with those things to the best of our ability, given the budget limits we've got. And as well, when we were asking for 2.5 million, 2 million, 1.5 million, and underspending by almost a million dollars, that really undermined the credibility of our budgeting process. So I think you and Roger and all of your managers, and again, this is for the public's benefit, are doing a very good job in spending those dollars and making sure that if something isn't going to be spent, that you substituted for something else that was going to be a liability in a subsequent year. So just want to say, it's great to see that you've corrected those issues and, as I say, the explanations of what you substituted and where monies have come from, including the deferrals and taking monies from deferrals out of capital reserves. All of that's, all of that's very good. And I'd have to say, from a governance perspective, it's great to see that level of management and commitment by you and the whole management group at the city in terms of managing that whole capital budget. So thanks to everyone involved.
Great. Any other questions regarding the capital plan for 2019? Then I'll move on to reserves. So at the beginning of 2019, we started the year with right around 4.2 million dollars in reserves. There was quite a bit of activity, whether that's allocations to our reserves or draws from our reserves related to our capital plan. I've itemized those in that, in the, in the year-end financial report. I hope that it was straightforward and you could follow along. I do want to highlight two things, though. One is that we budgeted a $10,000 allocation out of operations into our election reserve. So if council recalls, or for the benefit of the new members of council, rather than us incurring a large expense every four years related to city elections, where we've, we've spread out that evenly to approximately $10,000 a year. So each non-election year, we allocate $10,000 to the election reserve. And then in the fourth year, during the election, there's, we draw 30,000 from the election reserve, we expend approximately 40,000, and so the net impact in each year is approximately a $10,000 spend. For whatever reasons, that entry did not happen in 2019. So that is making up a component of our half a million dollar operating surplus. So next month, when I do our 2020 budget amendment related to our prior year's surplus, I'm going to be requesting that part of that surplus, $10,000 exactly, gets allocated to the election reserve. So it's going to slightly deviate from our operating surplus and deficit policy. That's, I just wanted to give a heads-up to council that, to be prepared for that recommendation to come next month. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is that, as council recalls, we're almost two years now from receiving approximately $650,000 in an HSP rebate that we weren't anticipating and we were holding it into a payable. I presented in the fall a staff report to council, and we basically said, you know, enough is enough, enough time has gone on, and we're going to book this as revenue and allocate it to our reserve. Well, that entry didn't, didn't happen either. It did not impact our operations because it didn't come into revenue and we didn't move it to, to the reserve. So that entry is going to happen in 2020. So we're going to move that money out of a payable, we're going to code it as revenue, and then we will transfer those dollars to the reserve. So that will be part of my budget amendment in June as well, so there's no, there's no variance impact to that either. But as you can see in the report, we ended the year with 4.5 million dollars in total in our reserves. In all honesty, there's 650,000 additionally that should be there as well. So it would be 5.15 million dollars in. True. Well, I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding our reserves.
Okay, Counselor Bush?
Just a comment, Stephen. Just great to see that we continue to build those reserves, especially in the face of all the financial pressures that we're facing across the board in a variety of different areas. So again, if we need to draw on them, having a bigger number to draw on is always a good thing, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I guess I can, I'll say it tonight, it's part of my PG&amp;Ms for 2020 is to do an enhancement to our reserve and reserve fund policy and to establish a target of where we want the reserve balances to be, obviously recognizing that in years, if we have a major spend and we're going to be utilizing reserves, or a large portion of the reserves, rather than taking on additional debt or whatnot, there'd be some ebbs and flows to that. But one of the items that I'll be establishing in our policy will be, will be, and 5.15 is great, it's a lot better than what we had when I first started in this position, but I think we would all like to see it from a financial sustainability perspective of the city, have that quite a bit higher.
Stephen, I just have a quick comment on, on the format of this. Thank you, it's wonderful, it's so easy to follow through compared to what we had prior years, this is a charm. And a quick question on, back to expenses, salaries and wages. And I notice, how many positions do you think were short within our organization? And have we recruited some of those in 2020?
Yep, great question. I was actually prepared for that, so I'm glad you asked it, Counselor McKinnon. We didn't have a position vacant for the whole year. So that, that, it was almost $600,000 of variance relates to multiple positions. So we had GIS analyst position vacant for a period of time, our fire chief position was vacant for a period of time, the lead hand at the arena was vacant for a period of time, we had an admin intern vacancy for a period of time, our HR manager position was vacant for a period of time, we had an HR support position that was vacant for a period of time, in provincial offenses, we had a vacancy for a period of time, in public works, the engineering tech position was vacant for a period of time, a heavy equipment operator, in public works, there was also the clerk vacancy, and then in childcare, due to enrollment reductions, we adjusted our salary structure in there as well. So, so we were managing that, but there were gaps from a full complement throughout the year. Okay, thank you. Counselor McKay, if I could make a comment?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the treasurer, Stephen, and our CIO, Roger, and our finance chair, Norm Bush, and really all the members of your respective teams for your demonstrated financial discipline and attention to the details of the operation. And it's been done without losing sight of the big picture, that we're really here to serve the public as efficiently and effectively as possible. So thanks to all three of you and your team.
Appreciate that, thanks. So that's it for me, unless anybody else has any other questions.
Well, okay, thank you, Stephen. I'd like to ask Ms. Hyler to present her staff reports.
Okay, thank you. I have three reports this evening. The first is to ask if council would like to support a resolution passed by the township of Emo calling on the provincial government to work to close the gap in cell coverage along Highway 502 by working with area mobility providers and key stakeholders to establish a network infrastructure coverage over the entire length of the highway. Is this a resolution council would like to support?
So, any comments? Any questions in regards to that?
Is this something you would like to bring forward at the council meeting with the resolution, or are you not interested in moving it forward?
Mayor Wilson here, if I could have a comment?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I, there's no harm in, in supporting the motion because I, I know that there are some dead spots on that section, a number of sections of that highway, and if you have accidents or whatever, and people are calling for ambulance or whatever, just for that safety perspective, it's, it's something that could be very helpful in situations like that.
Everyone in the room think we should bring that forward?
I agree with Greg that, you know, there's good reason to try and get better coverage throughout that area. You know, I know many people who travel at every, every day. I have suppliers that do that route on a monthly basis, and many times, like, it's, you know, they, one in particular has had a deer twice and no cell coverage, and I'm going to sit by the road and wait. So I think it's a benefit to definitely support.
Okay, we'll move that forward to the May 25th council meeting then.
Okay.
Okay, my second report is to see if council is in favor of amending Schedule F of the procedural bylaw to state that members who participate electronically in open committee of the whole in council meetings be shown as present from an attendance perspective. Now, of course, this would be under normal circumstances, not as we sit today in an emergency situation. As shown in the report, the municipal act now allows members of council to participate in open committee of the whole in council meetings remotely. Counselor Bush has requested that members who attend electronically be considered as full participants from an attendance perspective, so that they're not considered to have missed three consecutive meetings of council if they attend electronically. He notes the current language in the, on remote participation is silent and on whether participating electronically is counted as formally being there, and that it appears it's up to council to make that decision. Having members formally counted as being in attendance when they are participating electronically would put an end to the need for members who are going to be out of the council chambers for three consecutive meetings of council from having to request permission of the other members of council to allow for their physical absence by way of a council resolution. He's asked that this matter be taken to the policy and bylaw review committee for consideration, and that was done in February. Following that discussion, I was directed to bring a report to a future committee of the whole meeting to recommend changing Schedule F of council's procedural bylaw to state that members participating remotely are shown as attending remotely rather than participating remotely in the open committee of the whole in council meeting minutes, so they would be considered full participants from the attendance perspective. As per the legislation, members of council would still not be able to remotely participate in or attend closed committee of the whole or council meetings. Are there any questions on this report?
So Allison, just to make it clear, though, we still have to have a physical quorum in council chambers, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. There would still need to be a physical quorum in the council chambers.
Thanks.
Mayor Wilson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, I support it, I think it's great, and as events of the last few months have unfolded, I think we, we've all, the whole country has had a quick lesson on the benefits of electronic meetings, so I can see where, I can see at some point we'll have, we'll be allowed to attend closed meetings as well. But for now, I would take, take this motion for sure.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon, Shane?
Thank you. Again, yes, my question first of all is to the clerk, and the mayor just brought that up, but aside from the emergency meeting status that we are in, does the municipal act allow a council member to attend closed meetings of council remotely?
No. No, they can only attend electronically, open, the open sessions.
Okay, thank you. And I have some comments about this, and I support this concept, and I believe that this is the future of government, not only at the municipal level, but at all levels. So I would support these changes, but I think it would be fair to do so at the end of our term, at the end of our term of office, which I believe, believe it or not, folks, is 2022, I think, it's time to be protected. There are two reasons for this, and first of all, potential candidates for mayor or council this term may have withheld their candidacy, knowing that their travel or snowbird status would not be acceptable for their attendance, so they withheld their candidacy. Secondly, and more importantly, voters may have not supported a candidate, knowing that they would be out of the city or country for more than three months each winter or each year. And I'm sure that if we pass this amendment to commence at the next term of council, questions about attendance and residency would be brought up, brought forward during campaigns and all candidates appearances. So if we date this amendment to begin at the, with the next term of council, I will certainly support it.
Any other comments? Thank you, Shane. Any other comments or questions? I just have a comment here. I think, as Mayor Wilson stated, the situation we find ourselves in today, I think it's brought on a sea change in regards to remote meetings. And to that, I know of a company in Toronto that they're looking at long-term shutting down their offices and people working from home, it's working so well for them. There's going to be a lot of things changed here, and I think the public will understand that and would support, you know, what we're doing here. So, yeah, so what do we do now?
I just need to know what the direction would be for the resolution for the 25th of May meeting.
Counselor McKay?
Oh, Counselor, go ahead, Norm.
I just, I just have a comment on remote participation versus effectiveness of remote participation versus participating electronically. And my comment, my comment is this, based on observation and experience, is that it really depends on, the effectiveness of a counselor really depends on the individual. For example, during the term of the last council, I won't speak to this council, but during the term of the last council, I was witness a number of times where a counselor would show up and be in attendance in council chambers, and as they walked into the meeting, they picked up their package for the meeting, totally unprepared, but they were in attendance. I witnessed that several times with two different counselors. And so whether a person is in attendance or not, their effectiveness, it really just depends on the individual. And so as we've been seeing, and as we've had comments this evening, as we've seen, electronic participation, even at 100% level or close to 100% level, can be very effective. And again, it just depends on the individuals involved and how committed they are to doing their homework, researching the issues, having opinions, and being prepared to debate arguments from the perspective of having got the information and then making good informed decisions. So whether it's done electronically or in person, to me, makes no difference. It's just a matter of the individual and how much effort that they put in. So that would be my comment, and I would, I would support whether it's for me, this council, the next council, or councils thereafter, appropriate remote participation. And I think that this council right now is proving the effectiveness of that. Those would be my comments.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So I guess we're...
I'd still need to know.
Dave?
Oh, Counselor Price?
You know, I can understand Shane's comments for sure. Like, most people would probably say it's, you know, this should have been brought up during the election. So I totally get where Shane is coming from, but I also do believe that this is what our future is going to be. But I also do believe that this is what our future is going to be. Like you said, companies are now realizing that being in Teams meetings or in Zoom meetings, it is, it's part of our future and, and it's part of moving ahead. And regardless of if you are in person or if you're, you know, hundreds of miles away, does not mean that you're less effective in, in that role. So I do support it for sure, understanding what Shane is also saying, like, you know, it, it is something that probably could have made, made a vote or taken a vote away. But I do believe that this is our future and, you know, as long as we understand that it's not something that there's going to be more than the majority of our council is going to be sitting in a chair other than in council chambers during meetings. So I agree that we should allow it to happen. And once again, I do understand where Counselor McKinnon is coming from with his comments. So, but it is, it is our future.
So I guess we got, we're giving you a direction to bring it to the next...
To make it effective, what date?
Oh, oh, we needed, I guess Allison needs a, a date to make it effective, this resolution, what we're doing here.
Right away.
Right away.
Right away.
Sorry, what was that?
What date, when do you want this to be effective? What's the effective date? Right away, a month from now?
After the next election.
After the next election?
I think now.
Okay. Counselor Bush?
Now, it's the world we're living in.
Counselor Carlucci?
Now is fine with me.
Counselor Shane McKinnon? Like you, next election?
As I stated.
Okay. Counselor Martin McKinnon?
These things are the way of the future. I sit on a regional board that is definitely looking at going at this full time. So if we're going to do it, let's do it.
Okay. And I support doing it now too. And the mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Now, now, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move that forward. And my final report this evening is one that recommends council adopt bylaws to amend the format and substance of four municipal code chapter bylaws for ease and use of transparency. A municipal code is a compilation of selected bylaws and the city of Dryden has a municipal code with approximately 50 chapters or bylaws. A municipal code should be updated at least once a year and that's done by having municipal employees reformat the adopted council bylaws that fall into the code chapters and forward them to the American company that updates the municipal code. Time constraints and lack of resources have made it very hard for us to update the city's municipal code recently and so that hasn't been done since 2016. Since the code is what appears on the city's website when you look for bylaws and it only contains selected bylaws that haven't been updated for several years, staff are recommending changes. Some of these code bylaws are completely out of date and should be removed entirely. Some need to be revised and others are fine. As these approximately 50 bylaws are a small fraction of the total of the city's bylaws, the aim is to remove all of the code bylaws from the municipal code and to list bylaws individually by year on the city website so anyone can find any bylaw. A review of the code bylaws is underway and staff will be bringing them forward to council with a recommended course of action for each. So this evening, we have four code bylaws under consideration. Code Chapter 7 speaks to the Airport Advisory Committee. And this committee hasn't been active for many years and as such, the bylaw establishing it should be rescinded. The library CEO has advised that Chapter 15, library, needs an amendment regarding qualifications for membership. The cultural and tourism coordinator advised that Chapter 129, museum, needs an amendment regarding the appointment of the board chair. And the payroll and benefits administrator has advised that Chapter 195, retirement is fine as written. I have included the current code bylaws along with the draft revised bylaws in the agenda package so you can see the proposed changes and that majority of everything else for the three remains the same. Are there any questions about these bylaws? Counselor Bush?
Counselor Bush, please.
Yes, through the chair. Good work, Allison, getting these things updated. On the museum bylaw, I think it's similar for the library, but under 129.5, Section C, it talks about personnel issues being responsibility of council and it goes on to say a few other things. And where it says that in a couple of these, I'm not totally comfortable that that really should be the responsibility of council as much as it's an operating decision. And because council really has no direct involvement in these things. It says council can delegate it, but it seems to me it should be automatically delegated to the city CIO and the people responsible for managing these people's performance. And that, those personnel issues shouldn't be kicked up to be council's responsibility. That's, that's one of the comments that I have for, for discussion for the rest of council. And on 13B, the wording is awkward. It says something along the line of qualified to be elected as members of council. And I wonder if that should be saying qualified to be elected as members by council.
Roger, you have a comment?
Through the chair, just a comment on Counselor Bush's comment in regards to the museum bylaw wording. That, that would be correct in the case of the museum. If that wording's reflected in the library bylaw, that would be an act of the library board as that's a governance board for, for the library.
I'm just trying to find where these are actually on the pages here, so.
Through the chair, Counselor Bush, just your last comment, what, what page were you referring to?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at it here. It's either 1.3B.
The board shall consist of up to nine members who are qualified to be elected as members of council. One member may be a member of council.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it should say as members by council instead of of council.
No, it's...
There's only one council member on there.
Right, but it's meaning that if you can run for council, you can also become a member of the board, the museum board. So it's the same qualifications as running for council as to sit on the museum board?
Okay, the wording just sounds awkward to me. It's not clear to me what it really means, but maybe it's clear to everybody else.
Does anybody else have a problem with it or we can try to clean it up if there's confusion? I think it was taken pretty much from the old one, wasn't it?
So is that it or any other comments?
Those are the only comments that I have. The rest of it looks good.
Okay, so I'll move on.
Anyone else?
Anyone else or is that it? Good. Oh, that's it.
Then we'll move the bylaws forward to the main council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, we have no notice of motion this evening. And go into announcements, Allison? And Counselor Bush, do you have anything to add for tonight?
Just as I'm out and about in the community, obviously everybody's still following social distancing fairly well, a few exceptions here and there, but I think the rest of society is pulling those stray people and stragglers along as situations dictate. So that's good to see. Again, we have no known cases, active cases in our area, which is great, which probably reflects the discipline that everybody's following. And secondly, it's walleye season opening this weekend, so I'm sure the lakes will be pretty busy and I just encourage everybody to make sure that they've got all of their boat's safety checked and bring all their safety gear in place. And again, while you're out on the lake, follow those same safety concerns and social distancing protocols. So good luck to everybody on opening day.
Okay. Counselor Shane McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a thank you to all those who have taken care of us during this COVID crisis. I've been impressed with the leadership at all levels of government during this time and I'm very hopeful that our count of four cases which have been resolved will hold. So thanks, everyone.
Okay. Counselor Carlucci?
Thanks, Counselor McKay. No, I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Martin McKinnon?
You're muted, Counselor.
You're muted. Okay. Well said. Okay, so Counselor Price? Thanks, Martin.
I just wanted to congratulate Morgan Shepherd on, or place, well, I wouldn't, a placement, but Morgan had some big concerns about businesses that didn't fall in under any type of plan that the government put in place to support business, small businesses in, during the COVID. And she really stepped up to the plate and spoke with our MP. And from that, she is now part of a group for small businesses. That information will then go back to the MP from there and then to parliament. So congrats to Morgan on being announced as part of that board. It's, it's great to see someone local and then a young business entrepreneur as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to compliment both the provincial and the federal government this evening on one recent and one older announcement that impact our town. And first of all, I think of our provincial minister, Rickford, regarding the announcement, it's old news now about the majority funding for that $2.8 million Van Horn rehab project between Duke and Victoria. And Roger, when, when does that start? Do we have any feedback yet?
Through the chair. We're hoping for a, for a June start date, Mayor Wilson.
Great, thank you. And thanks also goes out to the federal government for, for heeding pleas from our own district services board chair, Henry Wall, and his team and designating the organization as a formal partner in that fight against homelessness. And KDSB, you know, for those of you who don't know, it's one of the city's social service arms which we fund through local taxpayers every year with about, I believe it's 12, 13% of our budget. And this announcement, it's, it's really, it's an acknowledgement by the feds that Northern Ontario has been underserved for decades with most of the money going to larger cities in the south at our expense. So this is a really big win for, for our area. So I just was doing a little bit of checking on this designated community stream and it, it provides long-term stable funding to 58 urban communities outside the territories that face significant issues with homelessness. So KDSB, it'll still have to find matching dollars to utilize this fund, but the good news is that after, you know, 22 years of trying, as Henry Wall stated in a media release, we're finally on the radar of the federal government. And, and it's really, it's fairly significant for us, even though it's, it's, it doesn't sound like much right now. Knowing, knowing the great work that KDSB does, they'll, they'll make, they'll know how to leverage it. And I just want to congratulate Mr. Wallens and his staff for a job well done and also the feds. Thank you.
Okay, so, so, no. I'm good tonight, as far as comments go. So we'll move to adjournment?
Sure. I will ask for someone to move and second the motion to adjourn, please. Counselor Carlucci? Would anybody like to second it? Counselor Price, thank you. Be here forever. Moved by Counselor Carlucci, seconded by Counselor Price at this meeting. Do hereby adjourn.
Is it carried? All in favor, I mean?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's carried, right?
Carried, yes.
So now we're, this meet, okay?
Go ahead.